September, second Wednesday in September. I tend to get. Carl, it's September.
Good evening and welcome to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for July 12, 2022. You would stand please and Carl will lead us in further.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, happy birthday, Ray.
Okay, this evening our first order of business is our organizational meeting. This is for the year 2022, 2023. So we will go through here and most of this is dealing with making a motion and approving, hopefully, but certainly we don't have any comments or changes that you'd like to make. First of all, the mayor's appointment, which is not subject to board approval, is the appointment of Jerry Alito Jr. to deputy mayor position to act as mayor when the mayor cannot fulfill his duties. And next, we have board designations, and I'm going to lump these two together. The first is to have the Candidate for National Bank be designated as the official bank of the Village of Webster. And secondly, to designate the Webster Herald as the official newspaper of the Village of Webster. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
On the circuit?
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Mayor's appointment, subject to approval of the Board of Trustees. First, we have the reappointment of Joe O'Neal as deputy village clerk and deputy village treasurer for a term ending on July 11, 2023. And we'll do that separately. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Next, we have to reappoint Don White as village and zoning board of appeals attorney for a term ending on July 11, 2023. Have authorized the mayor to sign the retainer agreement with Kelly White on Frio Attorneys L.L.P.
Sorry, that's.
Second.
July.
Not the 11th? That would also leave the treasurer. These will be consistent, up and down. Okay, then we move to Historic Preservation Commission and Historian. We'll lump these two together to reappoint Peter Elder chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending July 1, 2023. And secondly, to reappoint Lynn Barton as village historian for a term ending July 1, 2023.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Next, we have Parks and Recreation Committee.
Are you going to reappoint Lynn Barton for the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, we did them together. Oh, yeah.
And we'll make this motion again to reappoint Lynn Barton as village historian for a term ending July 1, 2023, and also as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending July 1, 2026.
I'll make that motion, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Next, we have Parks and Recreation Committee to reappoint Peter Elder to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term ending July 1, 2023, and also to reappoint Ms. Rosemary to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term also ending July 1, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Let's get you.
Next, we have the Business Improvement District bid, and we have a motion to appoint Commander Byers, Trustee Lancy, and Gordon Clark to the Business Improvement District Board of Directors for a term ending July 1, 2023.
Make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Next, we have a motion to reappoint Trustee Alito, village board member to the Ethics Committee for a term ending July 1, 2023. Joe O'Neal, village employee to the Ethics Committee, a term ending July 1, 2023, and appointing Bill Horrith, village resident to the Ethics Committee for a term ending July 1, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have the General Office, and the first item under General Office would be to set the mileage for reimbursement for authorized village employees traveling with their private vehicle to be sixty-two and a half cents per mile.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Next, we have the Village Office Hours. They are set to be Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Fridays, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The Village Office will be closed on Saturday and Sunday, and the office will also be closed for governmental holidays, including the following: New Year's, Martin Luther King, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, and the day before, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and the day after, as well as Christmas.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And next, we have a motion for the following: Village of Webster policies adopted as written in these sections of the policy manual and employee handbook and shall be effective July 1, 2022. This is the procurement policy, which is section 5.2. If anybody would like me to read that, I will, but otherwise I'll just ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, too. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The following is in regards to village meetings. Village meetings are to be conducted according to section 2.2 of the policy manual. Regular village board meetings will be the second and fourth Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m. Meetings of the zoning board of appeals on the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 p.m. The village board workshop meetings will be on the first Tuesday of every other month at 6:00 p.m., but only as needed, and that will be indicated in the paper. In the event that a village board meeting, such as the one tonight, is moved to a Tuesday, the meeting will start at 6:00 p.m.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, next, we have a change of the following meeting dates. The village board workshop meetings for February 7, 2023, should it happen, is moved to January 31, 2023, and the June 6 meeting, 2023, would be moved to May 30, 2023. That would be to avoid having two meetings in the same week. Change the following meeting dates as well: The village board meetings, the July 13, 2023 board meeting will be moved to July 11, 2023, anticipating that there will again be a carnival next year, and so it's nice to see it beginning this year again. And November 23, 2023, moved to November 21, 2023, for Thanksgiving holiday. I have a motion to approve those changes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Next, we have a village board liaison assignments. These assignments would follow the village board organizational meeting until the village board organizational meeting on July 1, 2023. And they are the same as they were last year. I did not have any exact or anything that anyone had to say regarding these, so I just look at as they are.
I missed that one, so it should be July 1, sorry, not July 11.
No, July 1, 2023.
Oh, okay. Your copy, never mind, okay.
But the village board organizational meeting is going to be July 11, 2023. So really, the motion should say if you want it July 1, then just delete the following liaison assignments that are in place until July 1, 2023. Don't refer to the organizational meeting.
Thank you.
If you want to refer to the organizational meeting, then you've got to make it July 11, because that's when you're having these meetings. So it's either one or the other.
Somebody changes this year. Okay, the meeting will be July 11, but these assignments will end July 1.
As all of the rest of them are.
Yeah, we're trying to move everything to July 1, just for future clerks and boards and stuff, instead of trying to track when you're having these meetings on Tuesdays because of fireman's curriculums, because who knows how long that's going to continue or whatever. So we just figured it's easier to make it July 1.
We could have.
There may be a week where there is no liaison, but.
It's the way it is.
I think we'll.
I doubt you're doing anything the week of July 4 anyhow, you know, so it really doesn't, there's a practical limit, you know.
All right, so we can make that July 11. That's why do I have a motion to approve, July 11.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And finally, the next organizational meeting. Looks like it will occur a year from now, Tuesday, July 11, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. prior to the regularly scheduled board meeting. I have a motion to set that meeting for next year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. And it looks like we've come hoping to end this organizational meeting. Don't we cover everything? Have we covered it all?
Just have to have you sign a couple things.
Well, I have a couple of new agreements for retainer for Don for this year, so I will sign those.
And I will update the procurement policy to today's date at the back.
Actually, yes. All those things we used to do, you know. Okay, then. We shall move into the board meetings, Governor Jen. And first, again, after the organizational meetings, we'll have the floor open to public comment. If anybody would like to address the board this evening, please come to the podium, state your name, and if you would like to talk for the board. All right, it looks like the audience will like to remain quiet and pass on this one, so we'll move on to regular board business. First on the agenda is, as normal, to approve the minutes from the June 23, 2022 village board meeting.
Okay, I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the bills. Names and warrants. Went through them today, I noticed that there were a few things that were done for, like emergency repairs. Can I quit some expenses these days, Jake?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I had questions, I had like three of them, but I got them all answered, so.
Quick one, Jake, can they name our supply? First one on there. Twenty twenty eight is door reflective cones. Don't we have a ton of cones, or you needed more?
Yeah, we needed more, so we've got some more cones there. Especially when we do gutter projects and things, we use quite a few of them, and then if some get, you know, rotate out, some disappear, and so, yeah, we just say, we generally get that quantity of them every year.
I'm just curious, how many, how many did you give roughly?
Fifty. I think it was fifty.
First National Bank, it's a twenty table name. First National Bank of Omaha.
That's the bank card, I'm not sure if the bills are here. It's something for the office, it's thirteen twenty five four oh six, so it's an office.
It's an office, I have, but I can't remember either.
Heather. That's mostly, if not all, LMT stuff with the changeover to the back. And we apologize, we did not include the credit card breakdown in this one. We just forgot to put it in, so we'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Where was the new cardiac, I assume that it's in the filter later?
No, those are just, those are just the pads, and we had some that were expiring, or had expired, so we, maybe we had three replacement pads. There was one in each, there's one here, one in the front office, one down at S T P. I think that's all it was, was the pads. This.
That's what I remembered.
So we have the one that's in there and a backup one for each.
Anything else?
No, like I said, I got my all had answered, so I'm fine.
That replacement light pole, Jake, was that the one on West Main? What's the last item on that?
Yeah.
Replacement light pole.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a portion of, that's a remainder of the bill. We have three, three light poles and three, three light poles, three bases, three plant hangers, and three light, the heads to the top, because there's one on twenty seven north that was between the expressway and the work. East Main got hit, and one at fifty eight West Main got hit. Fifty eight West Main's back up, but when we ordered these, we ordered them to match what we got for the, and when they submitted the order, they sent us what the original specs, the light poles for the original specs, not what got changed through the process. So we had the wrong bases and the wrong plant hangers for them, so we paid six thousand dollars for that twelve, thirteen thousand dollar bill earlier. This is the balance of it, because we finally got all the right pieces and parts in it.
Yeah, that one I, yeah.
About fourteen months, I think it was. It was.
Oh, it's crazy.
Yeah, it's.
The first one was like February fourteenth, I think.
Yeah.
And that was when I questioned that. Okay.
So, yeah, just last week, we got the final of the bases in. Those plant shell bases are going on.
Does whoever hit the poles get?
We did, we, when it's known, we submitted their insurance, and we got insurance for, I think, two of the three. One was a hit and run, the twenty seven north that was a hit and run, but we got the one that went through, in between the, in between the bridges there, we got that person, and I think we do the one for four. I think that was, whenever possible, yes, we absolutely call the insurance company and say, we don't want to waste their insurance.
So we got a new Kubota, too?
Yeah, is that one of G G?
Yeah.
Again, that's one down.
Yep.
Well, I must have seen John. All right, any other comments, any questions?
No.
In addition? All right, I maintain approval, motion approved, claims and watch.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, in line to tax bill processing agreement, this is a resolution to authorize the village clerk to sign the contract with A B S Applied Business Systems, Inc. for the tax bill processing for a period to end April 1, 2023. So this backtrack has covered, Marsha, from April 1 of this year until then. Is that a reason why we have it in April?
Yeah. A B S realized they hadn't had a contract from any of the villages in like several, several years, at least four, so they sent us, before we'd already finished part of the work, we already paid for, so we paid in two installments, we paid for the postage beforehand, and then we paid for the, whatever's left of work, for the work, we paid in two installments, and they had sent this back in like April, so we were already started to do the work. They just realized they didn't have it. And we, I didn't bring them up at that time, because some of the clerks weren't sure if we wanted to continue on with A B S because of some various issues with them, just little quirks, but I'm not sure if I have what you, does it, other than that, so.
Is it convenient to set this up for renewal in April as opposed to following our normal calendar? That's okay?
Yeah. Unless they.
That's your question.
Unless, unless the other clerks decided to go somewhere else, but I don't know. All right.
This agreement will be made the twenty-third day of June.
Oh.
Oh, made the twenty-third day of June, so it's kind of a counterfeited, I wrote. Village of Webster municipality here in three thirty days to client, Applied Business Systems, Inc., A B S, and here and after referred to as the contractor, and the client's representative will be the tax clerk for that specific municipality. Motion to approve the resolution to authorize the village clerk to sign this contract with A B S.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Buckney?
Aye.
Trustee Lowery?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passing.
And we move to Don. Do you have anything for us to see or mean?
Just sort of a little follow-up from the parking discussion on June 23rd, and this is sort of a reminder to Jake that if you're going to change the parking regulations on either Main Street or Route 250, because they're state roads, you have to get the permission of the Department of Transportation first. The villages can't unilaterally change them, you got to run it by the State Department of Transportation. And that's vehicle and traffic law, section sixteen eighty-four. And just looking, you know, we were talking about enforcement, and I just ran across the, the Village of Geneseo is advertising for a part-time parking enforcement officer. So, and it's, it's part-time, and it says the general duties of a police officer and that part of the work. The only qualifications are that you got to have a driver's license. And in the case of Geneseo, since they have their own police department, the person reports to the chief of police, but here, you know, and I don't know if Monroe County Civil Service does not have an active list for parking enforcement officers, but I don't know if they have the title, they probably have the title, so you can see what the qualifications are there, but it's basically no one that has to have the qualifications of a police officer, a police officer, they can just be, you know, marshaled.
And how much is tax issued?
Huh? Well, they don't, they don't say how much it pays, but it's only, it's part-time, five days per week, approximately ten hours per week, so for two hours, two hours a day, Monday through Friday, they want this person to walk through the Village of Geneseo and issue parking tickets for people that are parked in spaces too long.
I think it's a good idea.
You know, so.
Thanks for looking that up.
I'd agree.
So, you know, you can check with, with civil service. And, you know, the city of Rochester has parking enforcement aids. And again, that's through the, they report to the police chief. But again, the qualifications are simply the driver's license. A high school, both of them are, a high school diploma and a driver's license.
So would they be able to give that, even in a village vehicle, or would they walk?
I would assume in the village, they would walk.
Right.
So theoretically, you don't need a driver's license. Because all the parking stuff is just. Because all the parking stuff is just right here in the central business district, it's all water.
Yeah, the problem is that they would have to get it up on Main Street, on the south side.
But, you know, if the, you know, you'd have to create the position within the village in my day, too, and you'd work through civil service to fill it.
And they would be able to, how, who would handle the tickets? Us?
No, the town, they would go through the town court.
Okay.
And the, and then the town, the town court should funnel the fines back to the village. If the village doesn't pay, it's on the court.
Exactly. Yeah, I talked to several people that have just done, because the owners of the businesses have just parked there and then no one's.
Boy, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be able to pass a law that.
I know.
Crow pivots.
We know that.
Owners from parking, because that's not enforced.
I know, we know that. That's why we were trying to.
I mean, who's car, the biz, you know?
Oh, we have, they have these kinds of.
Biz as owner.
No, no, social media.
Well, if they're parked there too long, you give them a ticket for being, you know, violating the law.
Exactly, that's what we wanted.
And I did drive by, see some tickets there last week. I did, went up to the police and see some tickets there, so.
Yeah, because I was even talking to Jake about, because I know Scott's the funeral home, they stopped everyone parking in their lot because of how many times the pillars on the front of their place were knocked over by people unbeknownst to them. And they had to repair them and repair them, and, and, and it was their insurance, nobody else was taking care of it. And I even talked to Jake about, maybe, you know, the, the village got them a couple of cameras, and I know you had to look at cameras, the cost of some of the cameras, the outdoor cameras. And, and if we paid to put them up there, maybe they would get, allow people to park there again. So, I'm gonna, I was gonna go over and talk to Jeff and see if that might be a possible thing.
Do they have, do they have anything that they brought to the entrance, like chain?
Yeah. What wouldn't make any difference, because the cars are literally hitting those big pillars.
No, I mean, to prevent them from parking in, they're parking by, over here.
Yeah, no, they have, well, they have, they were just putting A-frame signs up, you know, and finally, everybody got used to it and said, okay, I guess nobody can park there anymore. And the ones that are having the problem are on the south side of East Main Street. And most of them, the ones that I know, like the quilt shop and everything, they park all the way over on Laughlin Park. But then, a lot of those women are carrying sewing machines and everything else for the quilting, so we're just trying to figure out if there's anything that we can do to help.
And where do they do the quilting and bring their sewing machines into the main body of the shop, or is it on the side of it?
Um, the side, they can cope, there is a side door now that they can use, you know, or, you know. But didn't we once have a handicap in there?
There, there was, the handicap spot, the first one there is.
By Jess or by?
No, first one on Laughlin Park.
No, I know on Laughlin Park, but on Main Street, did we ever have one on that side?
You know, because there's no curb cuts there, so somebody.
Well, that's what I, okay.
You know, you'd be a, a driver that was, with their mobility, you'd have to go all the way to the end of the block to get up onto the sidewalk, so that's even more dangerous than.
Yes.
You know, if you're on a side street and go over.
Okay.
Directly, there's no cuts there.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
If, if the village were to pay for cameras, first class funeral home, do you need a whip written agreement from them, opening up their lot to the public?
Yes, absolutely.
And I'm, I'm not sure I would want to do that, but that'd be up to them.
Wouldn't, and that's how I felt, but I figured, you know, if you don't ask, you don't know.
But then, we were wondering if, what about during funeral times and during, we're calling out?
No, then they, they put the A-frame signs up, that they have a funeral.
Well, you could exclude, you could exclude that.
Yeah, we've done that, they've done that for years.
Just like in the back, there's those two or three spaces that are reserved for the owner of.
Yeah.
Five West Main or one of those.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that was carved out of the license agreement for parking.
Yeah.
On their property. So, you could do that.
But I figured if I don't.
But we just need something written from them, rather than, you know.
Well, that's.
Not just a handshake that the public would park there.
Exactly, but I wanted to at least bring it up here before I went in there. Thanks.
Sure. I have nothing further.
I like the idea of the part-time person, but two hours a day, I don't know if it'd be consecutive or not, because, um, I think we've considered having two hours of parking also with the parking.
Yes, and many of the businesses would have two hours of parking.
That's, that's all the Geneseo, that doesn't mean.
Yeah.
You're limited to what.
No, you mean whatever.
I would, even with that, who we are now, I would add a little bit more, because what is, problems occurred after two to three hours.
You might want someone working twenty hours instead of just ten hours. And then they can get one of these nice shirts.
They can. Let's add parking enforcer, and put it in the shirt, shirt.
Well, there is a notice, as far as parking on the north side of East Main Street, that those stores are, they have paid attention to the recommended parking unit, I get, and so that's what they're doing there now with the law, la la windy.
Well, a lot of them, but they have a back entrance, and that's, that's what makes the difference. Yes, exactly.
So, has, has anyone thought, uh, has anyone considered how much revenue, how much ticket revenue we'd have to take in to cover a position like that? It doesn't say, Geneseo doesn't say what they charge, or what they would pay any. Okay.
Or charge.
We could always give them a call and just see what they do. Okay? If we don't get any information, we don't make any changes.
My, my guess is, it's not going to be self-supported.
Right.
You're, you're not going to issue enough fifty-dollar parking tickets to cover, you know, you're gonna have to pay the person what's minimum wage these days, it's gonna be fifteen bucks an hour pretty soon, so you gotta pay them at least fifteen bucks an hour, and you figure it out. So, you know, it'll be an additional expense to the village, but if it, if it actually works and frees up more parking, then.
And we'd have more people coming into the businesses.
Right.
I wonder if the bid would be interested in going in on it, since they're the ones with the issues.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that's really an expenditure that, that goes along with the purposes of the bid.
Right.
It's business improvement district. The state set those up actually for physical improvements, storefronts and lighting and sidewalks and physical improvements. The village's bid has kind of expanded into entertainment and the set of their stuff, which.
Yeah.
Is not really how, what the state envisioned when they set up, but to now have a bid, they're, they're not supposed to be paying for general, you know, expenses of the municipality.
It'd be interesting to see who we would even can, have interest. Well, how about our friend, also a retired person, I'm gonna issue parking tickets.
Do you want, do you have, I should have asked you this, but do you have an idea of how much we've collected so far?
No, I don't, I don't trust it.
We'll get you some numbers on what we've collected so far with taxes.
A whole bunch, that's it.
You're now late. That's all.
Okay. Jake, DPW answer.
Yeah, with the DPW, just one thing as a way of, I guess, explanation, we're, if you guys are, the board is getting complaints, and we've tried something different this year, a little bit than we've done in the past, where we've milled, part of it, you know, was really through necessity, we've milled the road and we've left them longer than we ever have. The companies that had to bid for milling and, and paving, there's a, we had to hit when they were available. We also doing Kewber Park, we had to do the milling, the, the circle, we had to mill it, added the other work there, and transporting it in the milling machines, very expensive every day. So, we get a two-day deal when they were there, we got them there together, we have one mobilization charge, and get different areas, we did Wood Street, Reynolds Road, get over there on the east end, and then get over to Park Circle, all while we can get them here. Hopefully, next week, they're gonna come, there's just a little bit of veg work and stuff to do around some of the vels and manholes and things, and then get them back and paving after that, but it was really an effort to keep the cost down, to take, to take advantage of the availability of them, but also keep the cost down rather than really miss the circle, and then having to transport it back there again, and do other parts, so we're gonna look at it and talk about it here at the end of the season and reevaluate, we want to do it again, because, you know, I certainly, I, I, the people have been voting with their phone calls, and going down on it.
Do we have a date?
Not yet, I mean, it's all weather dependent, so we don't have a firm date, even if they said, hey, we're gonna come, you know, August third or fifteenth, that would be a guess, really, because their other projects can push things back what they have, so they, they have a date, they have schedules. They're coming back next week, coming back this week to look, get the list, and then coming back next week to do some of the final little button up with a little planer that they have, and then we're gonna schedule the, the paving with them as well. So, our hope is by the middle of, or middle of August, we'll be able to have. Get those back in there, but they, we've got the circle, we've got the, you know, curbs and the gutters in, the concrete's in, we're trying to talk to somebody about, you know, the dirt in the center there, because we're not slinging it in there, so we're not dragging on the brand-new apron, and then get the, you know, get the asphalt done, but the, the center of the circle's not holding anything out, really, just, it's just a little.
But that's a good, that's a good beginning, out of that idea.
Yeah. With, excuse me, the sewer, we're continuing, we had our monthly meeting last Wednesday, progress meeting, and then we're continuing on with those meetings and that effort for the upgrades.
And then we, I'm not on the agenda or anything, but I wanted to bring up something about Hystark Preservation Commission, because we've started the site of the month again this year, finally. And the first one was really the standpipe up on North Avenue.
South Avenue.
South Avenue. That was in June, and that was just a, like a quickie. And Peter, of course, has all the history on it, so he's not here. And then, the next one we had was fifty-seven Laughlin Park, and that was another, that was next to Dick Bateson's house, and how they had remodeled all of that. And now, I got thinking about it, and I thought, why don't we start getting some of the businesses in it? I mean, some of these are so valuable, they've been here forever. So, I went down and talked to Dimitri Stefano down at the cold storage building, and he said he was quite interested, he said he would love to have that, he would even give a tour if people wanted to go through and see everything that he has done, because he tried to keep, oh, a lot of the pillars and the, and the huge piping and everything that they had inside, and, and even, even the brick, everything, he's trying to keep a lot of it within the apartments and everything, that's, whether you, that was just, oh, Peter and I, it was just gorgeous. So, I thought that maybe we should try doing businesses.
That's a good idea.
So, he agreed to it, so that's what we're going to do for August, and we're gonna do, we're gonna put the sign up July thirtieth, which is a Saturday, at like eleven o'clock in the morning, and he said if anybody, the zoning board, the village board, anybody that you know, if they want to come down and take a look through, he said I'd be very happy to take them, and he said, and I might even have a few orders. So, I said, wow, okay. July thirtieth at eleven, and it's a Saturday, so I thought a lot of people, you know, who would be working or whatever. So, anyway, that's our plan, and then the next one is gonna be another one on Laughlin Park, number twenty-seven. She and her dad remodeled that house, and now she's still working on it. They are still working, they're, they're doing the kitchen right now, but they've done a fantastic job, so that, that'll be the next one, and then I got, that's September, and then October, I want to try to get another business, and I asked a couple of them, and one, it sounds like they really want to do it, but they're businesses that have been here for eighty, a hundred years, you know, you can't, so, and I need, we have pictures of the cold storage building, we have the pictures on the outside and the changes that went through, but we don't have a lot of pictures from the inside. I mean, I can remember as a little kid going down, and I mean, the little freezer things were like this big, you'll put your vanishing, everybody had vanishing back then.
But we went on that tour inside, I saw that.
Yeah, that was way back when Carol Klein, and that's, that's why I talked to Dimitri now, because he's done so much.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, he also has a vegetable garden out there, and a flower garden, he is, he's doing, he's really trying to do a positive. So, anyway, that's, and, and, you know, put it on the website, Missy Rosenberry said she helped me too, and put it on the website, so, but we'll need to know how many people are coming, so call Peter Elder or call, and just let me know. Okay, thank you.
How, how full?
Full. He had, he had one that we could look at, one apartment that we could look at, that was empty.
Wow.
So, and they're, they're marvelous, and a friend of mine that I went to high school with, her daughter has one down there. So, I, you know, I got to see that one, the way she has it set up, and then I got to see it the way he, he leaves it.
Have you, have you, are you in the, like, the apartments in the old schoolhouse?
Yes. Yes, yes, I, I took all my steno in my typing, it's there, and I did, I'm waiting because they are.
Or just another repurpose.
And that's another, yeah, it's very tall, yeah, it's very. Yeah.
All right, anything else? Anyone has? If not, I would make this announcement, that as of tomorrow. At Fireman's Field, for the first time, coming back after two years, we have a Webster Fireman's Carnival, and that will begin tomorrow night at six P M. until close. And Thursday, of course, we will have the Fireman's Parade, again, down Main Street, and Friday, I believe, there's live entertainment. And Saturday night, midnight, for those of you who are still up, there will be fireworks. And if you're not still up, you might wake up to the sound of fireworks, but they're back for the first time in two years, so that's awesome, we're glad to have them back in the carnival again, going. Very good. Anything else? If not, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for watching, and we hope that you will visit the village for the carnival, and for other activities that are happening, there's also a wine walk, I guess I should, not object this, but there's a wine walk. not an objective, but there's a wine walk, that's Friday night.
That's right.
Correct?
Fifteen, yeah.
And that is.
Six to nine.
Pardon?
Six to nine.
Six to nine.
Six to nine. So, come up for that and then go to the carnival then. All right.
We'll need the plants at the carnival.
Something like that.
All right, well, thank you very much.
We're off air.